We have a meeting number 34 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
As the members of Columbus City Council gather together this evening, good Lord, give them your assistance as they fulfill their responsibility in serving the citizens of our city. All of us are concerned with the continuing blight of gun violence and cut short the annual Juneteenth celebration in Franklin Park over the weekend. In response to this, help us, Lord, to teach our children a better way than the use of guns to solve problems and resolve differences. Together, let us take a stand against all forms of violence and seek the path of reconciliation and peace together. While the members of this council cannot solve all the problems of the citizens of our city, they do influence public policy as well as set the example for the citizens of our community. In their deliberations, good Lord, give them your wisdom and insight, the living presence of the power of your Spirit among us, and assist us in coming together in a renewed sense of community, ever concerned for and working toward one another's good as your beloved children. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
It's their second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginther. First, I'd like to acknowledge the Boys and Girls Club. I think there's some representatives here tonight. Would you please stand? I want you to see those young people. Could you bring them down? Bring them down to the front. They were participants in the Flag Day, and they were just wonderful on Friday. Now, there were about 60 young people that were down council and did such a wonderful, marvelous job. They informed us about our flag, one of our most precious symbols of freedom, and they did such a terrific job. I wanted to come down to council, a few of them, so that you might see them. Would you like to say a few words tonight? I'm gonna put you on the spot. Honey, would you want to come here at the microphone? Thank you. And then have the young people come facing this way.
Well, we just want to say thank you for the recognition. These young ladies have worked along with the other members of the West Side and Milo Unit of the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus. They have worked their entire school year to put together that Flag Day presentation, doing various exercises to increase their level of comfortability in their public speaking. So we just would like to say thank you for the acknowledgement.
And please give me your name, and I want you to introduce the young ladies, or they introduced themselves, and tell me what school they attend.
Okay. I am Shay Lower, known as Ms. Shayla at the club. I am a youth development professional there.
I'm Jennifer Martinez. I attend CCA West Columbus Collegiate Academy, and I'm 12 years old.
My name is Lucy Bednar Warren. I go to Indy Nola and former K through eight, and I'm 10 years old.
All right, and they shared with us the importance of the flag, the historical significance of our flag, and they were just absolutely wonderful. So I want to make sure that we had a chance to recognize the young people appropriately. Thank you so much for coming down, and continue to do the good work at Boys and Girls Club. All right, thank you. Next, the Cardinal Health Veterans Professional Advancement is offering the Veterans Professional Advancement Course, free of charge, is focused on helping soon-to-be separated and separated veterans successfully transition to the civilian business world. This course will cover resume and cover letter writing, military skills translation, interview preparation, and much more. This is not only a great learning experience, but also an opportunity to create a veterans' network within Cardinal Health. For more information, or go to sign up for, those interested in signing up for the program, contact Justin at GMB-VPAC@CardinalHealth.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, I have 142X 2013 to honor and recognize Cornelius Otis, Mark Harrison, Jimmy Miranda, and Kiara Wilkie of the Columbus Jack Attack Bocce Team as medal winners at the 2013 Paralympic National Bocce Tournament. So I'd like to invite them to come forward. Council President Ginther, we have some champions in our midst because on May 16 through 19 at a tournament in Michigan State, Kiara finished with a gold medal in team play, Jimmy finished with a bronze medal in pairs play, Mac finished with a silver medal in individual play, and Cornelius finished with a silver medal in individual play as well. And they're making strides on the national scene, from what I understand, and they're actually competing to go to, they'll be competing August 2nd through 9th in Kansas City, Kansas, as part of a series of competitions that hopefully will accumulate points to be able to play in the National Paralympic Games in Rio de Janeiro in, I think, three years? So, three years, yes. And we have Luke Edelbrock, the coach.
Correct.
Yes, so please, why don't you fill in some blanks that I left and...
Well, we, thank you for letting us come down here, Councilman Ginther.
You might have to stay where the microphone, so everyone can hear you.
And Director, Assistant Director Allmiller, thank you for letting us come down. Bocce's been playing for about six years now at Franklin Park. It's a Paralympic sport for people with disabilities. So my supervisor and I have taken bocce to not only the recreational level, but now to the national level, to the international level. So Mark and Cornelius are going to go down to Kansas to compete with Brazil, Chile, Spain, it might be Portugal for a week in August, and then from that, they will go possibly on to the Paralympics in Rio de Janeiro.
I have a good feeling about this, that they're going to come and actually go to Rio and bring back the gold.
Yes, I really do.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Or any of the athletes want to say anything?
How long has everybody, Coach, how long you been teaching this, and how long have these athletes been involved in this?
I've been doing this since '07, so about six years, and everybody has been involved since that time. So I've really had, this has been a real honor for me as a recreational specialist to take the sport of bocce one step further, two steps further, to international and Paralympic competition.
Mr. Chairman, Coach, have we had any athletes from Columbus ever participate in the Olympic Games, the International Olympic Games?
Yes. Cornelius and Mark went to Belfast at the, not the Americas Cup, that's, thank you, the World Cup in 2011, and that was the first time they participated. And now they're, the coaches throughout the nation have, they've put, we've put, everybody has put Columbus as a very important part of Paralympic bocce.
Any questions or comments? Sure, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, for this resolution this evening. Just want to say congratulations to each and every one of you. You certainly are champions, and especially thinking about the manner in which you're able to participate in these sports is outstanding, and you really do have the heart of champions to be able to do the work. So I wish you, you know, really well as you continue to compete. You are certainly stars in Columbus, Ohio, and just want to say again, thank you and congratulations as you're all champions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mills.
I just want to say congratulations, and let's go get real.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you for, thank you for offering this resolution. I want to say to you all, I think we've already said, "Go get real," but we want to thank all of you for what you're doing, and we appreciate you all so much. And you're all champions, so again, we expect for you to win, so congratulations already.
Thank you.
Well, look, I think that you guys are going to bring back the gold, and y'all are going to be really successful, and I can't wait to have y'all back down here to actually feel what it's like to hold a gold medal. All right, so I'm going to count on you guys to do it. So I move for passage. Thank you.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you so much.
President Protem Miller? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Paley?
Yes, President Ginther, I have two resolutions this evening. First, I would like to ask Carla Rothan, Executive Director of Stonewall Columbus, to come to the podium to accept Resolution 0125X 2013, to recognize Stonewall Columbus for their 32nd year of service to our community, and to celebrate the 2013 Pride Parade and Festival. Tonight, we say happy anniversary, and thank you to Stonewall Columbus, which has been providing programming and services for Central Ohio's LGBT community for 32 years. This year, Columbus City Council has joined as a partner with Stonewall by providing some additional funding to assist Stonewall in their services. Stonewall provides health services, counseling, and social activities, just to name a few of their services. Every June, Stonewall Columbus hosts the Pride Holiday, a month-long celebration that culminates in the annual Pride Parade and Festival, which attracts over 200,000 attendees while drawing millions of dollars to the local economy. Carla, the floor is yours to discuss Stonewall's work and share some information about this year's Pride Parade and Festival.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. President Ginther, esteemed members of council, thank you so much for having me come today to talk about Pride 2013, of course, the 32nd Annual Pride Celebration, starting in 1981 with three gentlemen who are about 18 or 19 years old, and they decided, in all their youth and glory, I guess, to stage a march down High Street, and out of it was born an organization that started out as an advocacy organization and has grown today after 30 years to be the only LGBT community center in Central Ohio, and one of the largest celebrations, of course, at Pride Month in the Midwest. So we are thrilled to be here today to accept this, and thank you so much for recognizing the event. Our grand marshals this year are Joshua Snyder Hill and Sneva Snyder Hill, and Joshua works for our Health Department here, and I know that the city will be out, and all the allies of the city to be able to celebrate with us. You know, there's been a lot of violence, I think, in our United States of America in recent months, and after the Boston incident, I shouldn't say incident, I should say tragedy, after the tragedy in Boston, what we decided to do was sit down with the Division of Fire, and of course, our Police Department, Lieutenant Barth, who's been with us for over 30 years as well, he's been at every Pride Celebration, I believe, and say, "What can we do to step it up?" with Chief Paxton and Division of Fire, and so we came up with a comprehensive safety plan. We feel as if that safety is the number-one priority, of course, for this event, and so we know there's a lot of people that come and celebrate with us from all over the country, and especially here in Central Ohio, and we want to make sure that safety is of the utmost importance. We came up with a very comprehensive plan. Not only will the Division of Fire be there, also, of course, the Columbus Police Department. We've also hired private metro security, which is a private security team that will be with us, and then, of course, we have the American Red Cross that will be at the festival during the hours that that is open. In addition, we have a volunteer security team, they're called the Grizzlies, it's a softball team, and they're gentle bears, angels if you will, and they will be our walking security during the parade. We're also doing some education around security and making sure that we know that there is freedom of speech in America, and people are welcome to protest and talk about what is on their minds, and that's fine, but we want to make sure that we have a safe protest and a peaceful protest and a peaceful parade. So we will have walking security there to make sure that everyone ignores the protesters that is in the parade and has a wonderful, safe day. So we're trying to do a lot of education around that, especially this year, to make sure that that happens. I think that, you know, Stonewall Columbus has not had a lot of incidences, but of course, there has been some injuries, because whenever you have a huge festival like this, there are some, there's heat stroke, there's people, we've had people go down, heart attacks, but I know that the number-one thing that you want to do if there's anything that happens in one of these large events is you want to have immediate response. So the faster that you can get people to these folks, the better. And so we've upped our communications game as well, and we went from a four-watt communication system and radios to a 40. We also increased our number of channels from six, I believe, to 16. So we will have police and fire there with us, they will be with us in the dispatch unit too. So we are very confident that we've done everything that we can do to make sure that we have a happy and safe pride. And so that was very important for me to get that out today, and I hope that you understand that we appreciate your support, and we know that we have your support, but we want to make sure you know we're doing everything we can to, to make sure that it is safe for us.
Before I open it up for comments, can you tell what times and where the Pride Festival is for those that have never been there?
Sure, and we welcome all of our allies to come with us. On Friday, of course, we're open from 4 until 11 o'clock, that's the festival, and then on Saturday, the festival is open from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., I'm sorry. And then the parade will step off right here by City Hall on Front and Broad, and we will travel down High Street, steps off at noon, so we'll probably be finished around 2:30. It is one of the largest parades, I believe, in Columbus. I think it's the largest one we've ever done with a couple hundred participants, floats and cars, and lots of affirming churches, youth groups, GSAs from all over Central Ohio. So we're going to have youth there, we're going to have older adults, and I think we're going to have a lot of folks there that are going to enjoy the day, so I'm very excited about that. And then we will end at 8 p.m., and then on Sunday, we have a brunch at the Athenaeum from 11 to 1. So we try to be very helpful with our residents, of course, at Goodell Park. We know that that is a very difficult, fatigue, festival fatigue is very much part of living in the Victorian Village area, I'm a resident of that myself, and so we have also stepped up our cleanup game too, to make sure that we're in everybody's yard, up on their porches, making sure nothing is left. So I want to make sure that we get that out to the residents so that they have a good experience too. We want them to have a good experience with this festival and have it be as positive as possible.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Chair Paley. Ms. Rothan, I just, I'm proud of the work the City of Columbus has done for the Pride Festival, for Stonewall, the center that you are the executive director of, as well as the work and the outreach that we do in the City of Columbus in regards to the LGBT community. Look to you for guidance on many issues because of the wisdom that you bring on these issues, and I can't wait to march on Saturday with my family members that are coming down, as well as some volunteers, because I'm proud to support an inclusive agenda, to promote people for who they are, and I know there's a lot of issues, and I shouldn't say a lot, that's probably a strong word, but there are significant issues in the City of Columbus, and the LGBT community has been in a spotlight in particular over the past couple months, and it's incumbent upon us as city officials that we stand up and we march with you because we're proud of the work that the LGBT community does, and we're proud to support the work and the members of the LGBT community because you're brothers and sisters, just like all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, not every city has an LGBT community center, and not many of them that do have it supported by their city council, so that is very much on our minds as we march as well, and we feel that support, not just for our dollars, for operating support, which we take care of, folks that are middle-to-low income people all year long, but also the capital improvement dollars that you've allocated for us this year have been very, very helpful. We are engaging with an architect, and we are doing some focus groups to get our case study together, so that we look at these buildings for the future, so we can build programs in the buildings, and that's all because of the support of our city council, and we are very, very grateful for it.
Councilmember Mills.
Just want to wish you a safe and successful weekend, and I want to thank you for the comments related to safety, as I don't know that every resident understands what goes behind the scenes for police and fire to make sure these events are very safe, but they take it very seriously, and they have certainly stepped up in terms of events as a result of things going on around in the country. So thank you for mentioning that, it is a lot on their plate, but they are absolutely there to make sure that everyone is safe, so thank you again. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Carla, again, congratulations to you and to Linda, and all the work for all the volunteers that are working to make this a successful weekend, certainly realizing that over the summer, we have lots of festivals, and we've had individuals from here, from, you know, the Asian Festival, the, you know, Juneteenth, I mean, we have tons of festivals that happen in our community, and we are happy to have those festivals because it shows that Columbus is smart and open to everyone, and gives everyone in the city an opportunity to be able to understand and be a part of the diversity of our city. So I want to say congratulations for the work that I know you're doing, and how hard it is to be able, the time it takes to plan this major event in our city. So congratulations to you, and we're awfully proud to be able to be able to fund Stonewall. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I move for adoption.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Judy Andrews, Nancy Reinhardt, and Dewey Stokes, President, and any other guests to the podium to accept Resolution 0133X 2013, to honor and recognize the Hilltop Business Association, and the 2013 Historic Hilltop Bean Dinner, and to declare June 22, 2013 Bean Dinner Day in Columbus. The Hilltop Business Association was established in 1926 with the purpose of developing and improving the hilltop area of Columbus. Prior to the 1930s, the Hilltop Business Association would sponsor yearly picnics at Buckeye Lake as the way to thank their customers for their business through the year, and the picnics eventually became the annual Bean Dinner, held for three straight days, Wednesday through Friday, from noon until nine, with beans cooked in large pots on open fires, and businesses displaying goods and distributing samples. During the late 1950s and 60s, a carnival was added as an attraction, drawing visitors from all over the city to the hilltop area. After a hiatus of several years, the Hilltop Business Association revived the Bean Dinner in 1981, and since then, people from around the city and state have returned each year to the hilltop to enjoy the festivities and visit with old friends. The Historic Hilltop Bean Dinner is a cherished institution in both the neighborhood and the city at large, and will be held this year on June 22 from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. at Westgate Park. One other note before I open the floor to you, Judy. When I go visit the Hilltop Bean Dinner, I also like to announce that it's the Westgate Community Garage Sale Day for all you garage sailors, and it's a very good one, so come on out for the Bean Dinner and the Community Garage Sale. Now, Judy, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. This year, we have extended the time an hour, it's going to be from 10 till 6 this year. I'm Judy Andrews, I'm president of the Hilltop Business Association. Our part of it, besides setting up the entire festival, is we will serve the actual bean soup, the cornbread, the hot dogs, the sodas, the water, and root beers, and that type of thing, but we have several food vendors there, including Bob Evans, Donato's, a lot of different, you know, we have VFW serving big grilled hamburgers and corn on the cob, and we have elfin ears, anything you can think of, we've got food there. We have a display booth, most of it is banks, credit unions, Columbus Dispatch always has one, there's politicians and other professionals that set up stands in there. We have expanded our children's area this year, and we have, we're working with Franklin County Sheriff's Department, and they're setting up, they're bringing in about four or five sheriff vehicles that the kids can see, they're going to set up an ID booth for the kids, and we're adding that this year. We're also adding a fishing contest, we've had the pond there stocked, what, two weeks ago, I guess? That was Dewey's project, his idea. So we're having a fishing contest for kids in different age brackets, 10 and under, and 11 to 16, and they'll be getting prizes for different categories. The car show is another big draw, we had about two, I think we had 253 in there last year, and we're going to have over 300 this year in the car show, so we had to move them where there's more room, and they're going to be in a different location in the park to give them more space. You mentioned the yard sales, and yes, I think every house within a 10-block radius has a yard sale around there. There's also arts and crafts vendors that have booths at the actual Bean Dinner. We have two bands this year that are playing, and they'll be playing from 11 o'clock until we close at 6, splitting up the two bands. We have art display and contest, attend for that. The elections for the Grow City Hilltop, or Grow City, Greater, yeah, thank you. Dewey's correcting me here, that's right. Greater Hilltop Area Commission, of which I am a commissioner, and I still mess it up, are having our elections, and there will be voting there at the park, as well as the library and area church there, and we will be announcing the winners of that election at the Bean Dinner. The children's area, I'd say, has been expanded to add a couple of those things. We also have a gentleman that goes around making character balloons for the kids and handing them out. We're having a juggler this year that we didn't have last year, walking around entertaining with juggling, face painting, different games, we have, I think, six churches, that are each setting up different games for children in that area. for children in that area. Scouts will be there. We have four scout troops that are going to be there, and we have first aid already set up. We have Columbus Police that will be there, besides the sheriffs there. And so we're not concerned about the security with those people there to help us. So again, we want to thank you for this recognition, and actually hope that all of you will stop by and see us at the Bean Dinner. We normally, the count normally is between 8,000 and 10,000 people come through there during that one day. So it's quite an event, and we're looking forward to it. We started working on this 1st of January, and we're coming real close to the end now. Nancy Reinhardt is our executive secretary for HBA and has done so much work. Of course, Dewey Stokes is our vice president, and he's the go-to man. He gets everything done. He's a good guy. He's the hard worker in Nancy both. So I appreciate their help, and I appreciate your support. We've had some sponsorship report from the New Casino and also from Mount Carmel West Hospital, who is our big sponsor. So again, I thank you for this recognition, and we look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Klein.
I see Mr. Stokes, are you going to make comments, sir?
Councilman Chris Craig, yes, just like you, I would do that. Just as a follow-up briefly, Judy covered everything pretty well, what we're anticipating this year. This is the 89th year for the Historical Hilltop Bean Dinner, and it's a gathering of past and present citizens and alumni from West High School and Bishop Reedy and over to Franklin Heights that come and draw with us. We've strived in the last few years to try and make this a more family-oriented day with the family and providing the kiddie land and all that. The car show, as Judy said, is a big draw. The security demonstration this year from Sergeant Brown from Franklin County, we think will help, and still not only in safety for our children, but also they're going to stress a little bit about safety for businesses, too, in that area. So it's just another, we hope, fun-filled Saturday for all of us at Westgate Park. And I, as Judy said, traveling down the road to get this ready every year is a difficult task at times. There's a lot of permits to be acquired and some time to go, and I want to thank Parks and Recreation for all their assistance with us in gathering those permits and keeping us on the right track. This is another event that is, as I said, we're trying to gear towards a total family event. There would be no alcohol permitted in the park or at our event, and we believe that you can have a lot of fun without that, and our children set a good example for our children. The fishing contest this year will be divided up in between younger participants and the older participants. It's new that we tried this year. And while we're on that issue, I would certainly like to thank this council for your commitment to the Westgate Pond, what we call Hartley Pond, a harder pond, and your future reclamation of that pond for the future. I think it'll be a great asset to the park and obviously be a great asset to our fishing contest in 2014. I also wanted to tell you that I appreciate, as the West Side and working on the Western Area Commission or Board and working with the Hilltop Business Association, your help with the rails that trail our bike system that we're building to the West Side. I think it's going to be a tribute to central Ohio and to the City of Columbus and bring thousands of people every year into our community. So I wanted to say special thank you for that this evening, too. And I can say this, it wouldn't get done if Nancy wasn't answering the phone and answering the emails. We do keep in touch a lot. Thank you.
Nancy, I didn't want to go before you if you want to make comments. I know Ms. Paley would want you to make comments.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate, thank, again, Parks and Recs renovating the pond coming up, a lot of help from the city council to help us keep this family neighborhood festival, which we have so many people participating and helping make this happen throughout the West Side and beyond. And everybody in the City of Columbus now has my cell phone number, and I am still answering it. But thank you very much for helping us with all of this today.
Well, thank you. I just, thank you very much for extending me the opportunity to speak, Councilmember Paley. But I just wanted to thank all of you. I've known you, known you all, and appreciate your work. It's a wonderful, wonderful festival. And I know that Nancy's involved with business, and of course, Judy, and all the work that you do, and certainly with past administration, with being a commissioner, and all the work that you have done, Dewey, on behalf of this city, and continue to work. We just want to certainly applaud your work, honor your work. I would strongly encourage all the community to come out and support this great event, and it is very family-oriented, and just have a great day that time. So certainly wanting to acknowledge your work and your commitment to the City of Columbus.
There are no other comments. I will move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution this evening. I'm going to ask Barb Sekler, Mimi Webb, and Carl Sealy to start working, walking toward the podium. And this is Resolution 0139X-2013, to honor Get Active Columbus Together with FLYP, Fight, Live, and Inspire Prevention, and dedicate July of 2013 as Get Active Enthusiasm Month in Columbus. Whereas the City of Columbus Together with the Columbus Public Health is dedicated to healthy eating and active living as part of its comprehensive plan to tackle the obesity epidemic and promote cancer prevention. And whereas the City of Columbus creating an environment that supports healthier eating and physical activity through collaboration with nonprofit, private, and neighborhood organizations. And whereas the Columbus City Schools report that 29% of kindergartens, 38% of third graders, and 47% of fifth graders were overweight or obese during the 2009, 2010 school years. Whereas 1/3 of adults who are in Franklin County residents are obese. And whereas Columbus Public Health's Get Active initiative and Fight, Live, Inspire, Prevent, FLYP, a local cancer prevention organization, have similar goals in changing how people view healthy food and physical activity by connecting the public to information and events. And whereas Get Active Enthusiasm Month brings together the partnership of Get Active Columbus, including the Mayor's Bike Columbus Twilight Ride on July 12th and FLYP's 5K Run on July 13th in order to promote healthy living throughout Columbus and communities. Whereas FLYP and Get Active Columbus seeks to engage communities further by dedicating a month to educating the public and giving back to the community through information and reasonable and effective lifestyle adjustments. Whereas the City of Columbus Together with local communities to celebrate Enthusiasm Month in July. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize July as Get Active Enthusiasm Month in Columbus and urges all residents to change the way they think about active living, healthy eating, cancer prevention through small yet significant changes. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Barb Sekler, podium's yours.
President Ginter, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council, thanks so much for having us down tonight. It was great to see Councilmembers Paley and Mills this morning, helping to kick off Bike to Work Day and Share the Road. So there's an awful lot going on around bicycling, and I'll stand off to the side with the poster for the Twilight Ride and let Mimi Webb from Trek represent Columbus Public Health this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for having me and my spandex this evening. My name is Mimi Webb, and I'm the Director of Sales and Operations at the Trek Bicycle Stores, locally opened, sorry, owned and operated business here in Columbus. Honored to represent the Columbus Public Health's Get Active campaign and its mission to prevent chronic diseases such as obesity. The Trek Bicycle Stores have been a strong partner with the Columbus Public Health Initiative, helped kick off the Share the Road campaign this morning, and saw a couple of our council members there. We've donated a lot of bikes to a lot of organizations in order to help combat a sedentary lifestyle and promote an active and moving lifestyle. We've donated over 35 bikes to the Central Ohio Diabetes Association. We annually donate bikes to children at risk through our Backroom Coffee Roasters bicycle team. We've coordinated things like a statewide poster contest for fifth graders to explain and help promote the importance of bicycling and the benefits. So as you can see, we're pretty involved in helping Columbus stay active. We are also going to help kick off the Mayor's Twilight Ride on July 12th. Really excited to do that, as we have the past few years. So as you can see, you know, most importantly, there's a lot of bike momentum in Columbus. We are really excited to keep that momentum moving forward, and especially this July, as our resolution states. So I would like to say a special thanks to Carl Sealy and FLYP with their cancer prevention efforts, and we are looking forward to an Active July coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Do you want?
Hello, all. My name is Carl Sealy. I'm the president and founder, I'm the president and founder of FLYP. FLYP stands for Fight, Live, Inspire, Prevent, as Councilmember Tyson said. FLYP is a Columbus-based cancer prevention movement that we started about two years ago in Columbus after losing my father to cancer. We realized an opportunity to do more for cancer of the prevention efforts, to get people outside and active, eating healthy, and just to take responsibility in the fight while doctors and scientists are doing their part to find the cure. So I met with Barb Sekler, and we decided to, that our missions were very similar and that we should start Get Active Enthusiasm Month, and so we're devoting the next couple months. And our events happen to be coincidentally enough on days following one another. Hers is on the July 13th, and, oh, I'm sorry, 12th, and then ours, our run is at Darby Creek Metro Park on July 12th, and we're a 5K and a 10K walk and run.
So if anybody just want to get involved with either of the activities, the Mayor's Twilight Ride or the walk, how can they do that?
For the ride, you can go to bikecolumbusfestival.com, click on Twilight Ride, and it's very easy to sign up. Or you can print out a registration form and send it in to the Columbus Foundation. Thanks.
And for the run, it, our website is flypnow.org.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Any questions or comments on our council members? Thank you for coming down. It's so important to continue to promote a healthy lifestyle, and really do appreciate the work that both of you are doing to move Columbus forward. Thank you so very much.
Are there any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? Make sure I'm not skipping over Judge Barrows if he's here. Are there any requests by members of council from the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Development Committee ordinance 1232 and 1399-2013, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 1288-2013, Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 1346-2013, Public Utilities Committee ordinance 1287-2013, and Zoning Committee ordinance is 1223, 1253, 1310, 1317-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 140X and 141X-2013, Finance Committee ordinance 1321-2013, Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 1313-2013, Development Committee ordinance is 1361, 1362, 1363, 1366, 1367, 1385-2013, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 1093 and 1388-2013, Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance 1397-2013, Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance 1258-2013, Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1338, 1344, 1345, 1352, 1354, and 1386-2013, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1231 and 1318-2013, Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0087, 88, 89, 90, 94, 95, and 96-2013.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, you have signed up to speak, I believe, in support of 1362-2013 in the Development Committee. If you'd come forward, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, the chairman of solely vacant amendment properties in the North Linden area. I'm just for this only, I got three questions, is because I want to know how long that this property has been holding the land bank. Also, I would just want to ask a question to the development behind me, to my left-hand side. This property is in South Linden area, so again, my question goes to the Director of Development. Houses on 26th has looked like this. This is on east of Maynard. I went past it today. Looks a beautiful thing. Why is one of y'all interested to take this for y'all records, if I could? And again, I'm all for this as 125%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your comments here this evening. Any questions from council members? Anything the development director would like to add? If there's nothing else to come before council on the consent agenda, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig? Klein?
Yes, with the exception of 1231-2013, on which I'm abstaining.
Miller? Mills? Yes. Paley?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1258-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Tyson? President Ginter?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. And right before I start reading my ordinances, I want to take a few minutes to congratulate our auditor Hugh Dorian. As you recall, on, in January the 14th of 2013, we had ordinances 0131-2013 and 0132-2013, which was adopted by this council that authorized the refunding of certain Build America Bond Funds that were issued in 2009 and 2010. And if you recall, those bonds had an extraordinary option, redemption provision, which allowed us to refund the Build America Bond Funds at face value if the federal government either reduced or eliminated the scheduled subsidy payments. The sequestration of Congress earlier this year triggered that, the extraordinary option redemption provision. According to the auditor, that this council pursued to refund those bonds. As a result of the auditor's recommendations and this council's action, we now know that this, this- this transaction has saved us a tremendous amount of money. If we were to assume that the sequestration were to remain in place for the remaining life of those refunded bonds, this refunding results in these nominal savings, the actual reduction of the required principal and interest payments on the city's debt from 2014 to 2031 of $26,709 million. And present value savings would be $19,676,000. Now, if we assume that the sequestration were to end at the end of this federal fiscal year, which would be September 30th, this city is now locked into nominal savings of $22,843,000 and a present value savings of $16,313 million. So this action that happened in January, and because of our auditor making sure that we would be able to pursue this funding based upon the contract that he signed to when we got the Build America Bond Funds, we are saving a tremendous amount of money for the residents of our community. And so I just want to thank Mr. Dorian. If he wants to make any comments, he can, but then I think we should all give him a round of applause for saving us this amount of money for our residents in the city of Columbus. Mr. Dorian, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would only add, and you certainly recited that very accurately, and I thank you for doing so, but I'd like to add that all of these major transactions, these refundings were well over $400 million. These are all made possible by a very, very collaborative effort between our office and the Department of Finance and Management. So I thank Paul Rakosky and his staff for their cooperation in this matter, but it was a rare, rare opportunity to achieve some very, very substantial savings for the city, and it's only made possible because of those two ordinances that you adopted back in January.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Give a round of applause. Thank you so much. And now go ahead and read the ordinances. The first one is Resolution Number 0118X-2013, and it is to adopt the 2014 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency on the motion to table for one week, and then we'll have a public hearing next week.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1281-2013. It is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to renew and modify an existing annual contract with Asset Works, Inc., for the annual license renewal and support on the Fleet Focus application utilized by the Fleet Management Division to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes of 1959, to authorize expenditure of $73,307 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Fleet Focus application provides a management system utilized by the Fleet Management Division to bill, manage, monitor, and analyze all maintenance-related data within the division. Also, Fleet Focus gives the division the ability to provide accountability by tracking city-owned fleet equipment, such as refuse trucks, fire apparatus, compost graders, and various on-road vehicles to support the daily operational requirements of city government. This purchase order is for the yearly maintenance as well as software upgrades for the current Fleet Focus system, and we're asking for a bid waiver because this has been in place since 1998, and it has been customized to meet the city needs, and it certainly would not be cost-effective to bid out a new system that there's no other fleet software that works with our system. And so with that, I would move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance in finance is 1325-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Abbott Studios Architects, Planners for Professional Architectural Engineering Consulting Services for the programming and renovation of McKinley Complex, to authorize expenditure of $1,69,641 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. The scope of the work for this new facility shall include space planning, design, engineering, contract administration, services for the programming of multiple departments, and those departments will be planning and operations, facilities management, and environmental abatement for new and renovations of the structures located at 1355 McKinley Avenue. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you, ordinance number 1131-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Columbus Public Health Department to enter into an agreement with Streamline Health to continue providing the services for a vendor-hosted vital records management system, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize expenditure of $78,528 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. The vendor-hosted vital statistics record management system is a critical application that provides Columbus Public Health Department with the ability to provide extensive array of services, electronic data, and document management partnered with document scanning and operational workflow that provides full-to-end processing of birth-to-death records. The electronic foundation fully supports federally legislated electronic verification of vital events and statewide central issuance. The current system also has the flexibility to adjust to any future changes in state or federal law in terms of HIPAA and other information disclosure and reporting requirements. The reason we're asking for, to waive competitive bidding is because in 2004, the Department of Technology and the Department of Public Health, they worked together since 2004 to find the appropriate vital statistics application. From 2004 and to 2007, there were a lot of different changes at the federal level. We enacted a new passport requirement, and all this was required to be able to get to the system that we have today. So in 2008, we finally passed the legislation after working to find the appropriate program. We found one that was kind of a vendor-hosted application. That was an off-the-shelf program, and Streamline Health was found to meet the majority of the application requirements without extensive customization, but with some, and since it is a product that is designed for use in the medical environment, it already had the built-in confidentiality that we needed for HIPAA requirements. And so with that, we now have an agreement with Streamline that takes, we pay for the maintenance fee payable monthly and renewable annually, and this agreement, the vendor retained ownership of the software, and public health retains ownership of the data. And so it is so important that we continue to stay with this company, and that is the reason why we are waiving competitive bidding. With that, I would ask if to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1376-2013, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept additional funding from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children, which is WIC grant program, for the amount of $150,000, to authorize the appropriation of $150,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. The primary objective of WIC is to provide nutritionally desirable food and nutrition education to pregnant and lactating women, infants, and children at nutritional risk in Franklin County who meet categorical income and nutritional risk requirements for eligibility. This WIC program is for children under the age of five years, and again, it provides nutritional education, nutritional food, and breastfeeding education and support. In 2012, I'm sorry, WIC served more than 120,000 families. WIC is so important in our community because as we know that we have, we're talking, we're thinking about infant mortality, one of the reasons why we continue to have infant mortality is we do not have good prenatal care, and so we want as many individuals who would, who could qualify for the WIC program to take advantage of it. If you know, if you believe you qualify for WIC, please call 645-7280. And I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance, I'm going to ask Barb Sekler and Greg Myers to please come to the podium. It is ordinance 1401-2013, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept funds from the Foundation of Active Living through the Columbus Foundation in the amount of $27,865, to authorize the appropriation of the $27,865 to the city's private grants fund and to declare an emergency. This funding will provide personnel to assist with the support of the Kids Cycle Columbus Program, a new program that provides bikes, helmets, and safety instructions to underprivileged youth. And I'm going to ask Barb Sekler and Greg Myers to please talk about this program.
President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, members of council, the last thing I want to do is wear out my welcome this evening, so I'm going to be very brief. Kids Cycle Columbus is a great new program. We're going to create eight new bike clubs around the city. They'll be at recreation centers that have biking paths, and they'll also be at three nonprofits. And between these eight locations, we're covering every sector of the city. So the recreation centers are Barrack Dodge, Driving Park, Far East, and Tuttle, and the nonprofits that have come on board this year are the First English Lutheran Church, Grange Autobahn Center, and Godman Guild. These youth, as Councilmember Tyson said, will learn how to change a tire on a bike. They'll get special safety instruction from Yay Bikes, our nonprofit that's helping us, and they'll, they will also learn riding skills. So they'll be out riding every day, at least a couple of times a week, for six to eight weeks, and at the end of that time period, we expect them to have earned their bike, and they'll go home with a helmet, a lock, and a new bicycle. The hallmark of Kids Cycle Columbus is that it's sustainable, so we bought a lot of first-time equipment this year that we won't need in future years, and we purchased equipment for bikes that'll come in 2014, so that we've got at least two years to run this at these eight locations. The other thing is we're measuring outcomes. We'll pre-impose survey these youth, we'll have them journal about their experience, and at the end, we'll know the percentage that earned bikes, and we'll know a lot about how they benefited from Kids Cycle Columbus. We are partnering with both Recreation and Parks and Yay Bikes, but none of this would be possible without Medical Mutual of Ohio. And so it's great to have Greg Myers with us here today. They gave Columbus Public Health a $50,000 grant, and we are allocating some of that money this evening. So I'd like to introduce Greg to just say something on behalf of Medical Mutual.
Thank you, Barb. President Ginther, Chairwoman Tyson, members of city council, on behalf of Medical Mutual, just let me say that we're pleased to provide the grant to Columbus Public Health Institute of Active Living. The Kids Cycle Columbus program is commendable in that it's going to engage young people in building and maintaining a healthy and balanced lifestyle, and we are gratified to see programs such as this taking shape here in our community. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Craig, you Greg, and thank you, Barb, and those children at those eight centers will be awfully thankful to be able to participate in this program, so thank you. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills.
Abstain.
Paley Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. And now ordinance number, this is, I'm going to move to workforce development. Thank you. And if Shirley Constantino is here, she could start walking towards the podium. This is ordinance 1240 of 2013, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to amend the Workforce Development Administration contract with the, with Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation known as COIC, to authorize expenditure of $50,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. COIC is a one-stop employment service provider, and these funds will provide administrative support to fund some of the great workforce development services and programs offered by COIC, like our SOAR Hire Summer Youth Program, our Adult Services, our Dislocated Workers Services, Veterans Transition Services, and other workforce training. Shirley, the podium is yours.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Tyson. Can you hear me? I have a terrible cold. Does that help? As you stated, COIC is a workforce development system. Our responsibility is to determine policy for workforce issues. We provide training to our workforce, the members of the community for the workforce. Our goal is to provide a workforce system and employees who can meet the needs of employers today. These funds will help us to provide those services to our workforce, to the job seekers, as well as to provide services to the employers in our community.
Thank you for coming down this evening.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills.
Abstain.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. I now have a couple of announcements. The first is the African-American Male Wellness Walk, an initiative is hosting a wellness conversation on black men and mental health. It's this Thursday, June 20th, from 12 to 2:00 at the Gateway Wellness Center at 11, at 112 Harris Jefferson Avenue, Columbus 4 through 211. An estimated two-thirds of African-American men living in urban areas meet the criteria for post-traumatic stress disorder. Suicide is the third-leading cause of death among black men 15 to 24 years of age, and 92% of depressed African-American men do not seek treatment. This event is free and is open to the public. Also, the Finance Committee will hold a public finance committee meeting to discuss the proposed 2013 voted bond package. The meeting will take place here in city council chambers Wednesday, the 26th, starting at 5:00 p.m. And my last announcement is the Middle Ohio Food Bank and Barnett Community Center will host a mobile market program this Friday, June 21st, from 1:00 to 3:00. The mobile market program brings fresh foods and groceries to high-need areas. Please call 645-3065 to get more information. And that's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 1328-2013. This ordinance amends the management compensation plan, ordinance 1150-2007. The ordinance is amended by amending a classification title as approved by the Civil Service Commission and abolishing the classification of Deputy Director, Chief Negotiator, and two amending sections 15 and 16 to clarify the administration of the Disability and Vision Benefits Program. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
May I move to Administration? I'm sorry, Veterans Affairs. In Veterans Affairs, I have ordinance 1290-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to make financial assistance available through the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund administered by the Housing Division, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash between projects within the same fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $250,000 from the Housing Preservation Fund, to fund the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund represents city council's commitment to serving the housing needs of our nation's heroes. This ordinance will further expand the pilot program currently in place that has helped eligible homeowners located within the boundaries of the Southern Gateway Initiative. Approximately fifty... Approximately 15 veteran families have been served as a result of the Better Municipal Care for the Veterans Home Fund. I'd like to certainly thank Reverend John Edgar and the staff of the Community Development for All People for accepting the responsibility as the fiduciary entity in, of this important initiative. Their due diligence and commitment to excellence is noted. I want to certainly thank them for ensuring the effectiveness and efficiency of the operations of this initiative, and certainly maintaining the, and ensuring the integrity of the veterans' outreach and the, in terms of our resource allocation. The ordinance before you tonight will expand the opportunity for us to serve more veterans' families citywide. Eligible participants are those homeowners who reside within the city of Columbus and are either an eligible veteran or a homeowner with an eligible veteran whose permanent address is the same as the homeowner's, but is not a rental tenant of the homeowner. Additionally, eligible veterans are those individuals who has presented a military record denoting his or her, other than dishonorable discharge or release from active military, naval, or air service. For more information and eligibility requirements for the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund, please contact our Housing Division intake line at 645-8526, and leave a message that includes a daytime phone number where the applicant can be reached. Director Shoney, any additional remarks regarding, regarding this important initiative? And let me, first of all, thank, thank the Department of Development for accepting the responsibility to, to act as the fiduciary agent in this round of funding.
Thank you, Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council. I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue and partnering with us. It's always our effort to make sure that all of our citizens are well-housed, but for our veterans' community in particular, this is very important. You did a great job of summarizing the program and making sure we got out where the contact information is, so no further comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for your support. We're excited about the opportunity. I certainly want to thank my colleagues for certainly their support regarding this. And we look forward to, as we're venturing down this, this road, going citywide, that we're able to serve families, veterans' families, in a significant way. And then, of course, as we test out this year's work, we'll be coming back again next year, hopefully, to support our veteran families. Comments from colleagues? Hearing none, move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first two pieces of legislation and development this evening are tabled pieces of legislation from last week's meeting involving the administration's request for tax abatement for hotels that are being proposed to be built in the university area along Olentangie River Road, near, between the Schottenstein Center and Riverside Hospital. And if you, if my colleagues will recall, last week, I moved to table the legislation because a competing hotel had concerns about the benefit of the abatement that this applicant would be receiving. And the opponent issued a letter in writing, and we thought, as a council, it would only be fair to give the applicant the opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that the opponent raised. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Director Shoney to give us an update and a recommendation based on last week's events and comments and concerns. Director Shoney?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council. We, as the chairman said, we received some comments from a competing hotel raising concerns about our offering of these abatements. The concerns centered on two points. One was the, whether or not this set a level playing field within the community, and the second comment was a concern about whether these incentives were necessary for the project to go forward. On the first point, this is always a concern when we offer abatements. In this case, the, one of the two hotels is at a higher price point. It's a full-service Marriott compared to the competing hotel, and the other is at a slightly lower price point. As it relates to the necessary, how necessary these are to go forward for the hotels, one of the hotels is on a former landfill site on a brownfield site that has always creates challenges in bringing the project forward. The second hotel, the University Plaza Hotel, is bringing to the area a higher level of service than is currently in this gateway. This is a very important development corridor for us. This is a corridor right between Ohio State University and Riverside Hospital. It is one of the gateways to the community. We're doing everything we can to redevelop that gateway. When you look at people coming into the community for hospital services or to attend events at the university, or to attend the university, this is vital to us. We have taken these into consideration. We actually asked for written response from the Indus Group, the hotel developer proposing these two hotels. They provided us significant detail on the financial challenges they've had in raising the financing for this project, and we believe that these incentives are warranted, and we would recommend passage.
Thank you, Director Shoney. The property that's located on the brownfield site, the landfill site, is that the property that is the lower-priced Point Hotel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? I'm going to recommend that we accept the director's recommendation and move forward with this legislation. It sounds like the rationale being supported here is one that will warrant an abatement, not only because of the brownfield site, but also for the investment that can be made in that corridor. As the director noted, that poses significant potential for economic development between the Ohio State University and Riverside Hospital. So, I will, I will read the legislation. 1268-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an abatement zone agreement with Plaza Core Hotel LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 years, in consideration of approximately $20,440,000 in real property improvements, the retention of three existing positions, the creation of 26 new full-time positions with an associated annual payroll of approximately $1,063,000. I first request and move that it be removed from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
1269-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Riverview Hotel LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 years, in consideration of approximately $13,370,000 in real property improvements and the creation of 14 new full-time positions with an associated annual payroll of $502,000. I first request to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 1286-2013, and as I read the legislation, I'd like to invite Steve Torcell, and if it's okay with you, Director, Rita Parise to come up as well.
Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I will use my new guy exemption on speaking on this one and invite Rita to come up. Thank you.
Okay. Please come forward. 1286-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Homes on the Hill CDC, a not-for-profit organization, for services related to the Hilltop Home Repair Program, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash between projects within the same fund, to authorize the expenditure of $500,000 from the Housing Preservation Fund, and to declare an emergency. This is an investment that initiated out of council in partnership with the administration, the Department of Development, to invest a half a million dollars in the Hilltop in home repair, in an area that desperately needs it and can use it. And I know after many conversations where this came about, Mr. Torcell has been in my office advocating for this expenditure, and we've had several community meetings in the Westgate area that, and brought a rise to the topic of expanding what we've done on the south side, what the city has done in Wyandotte Park and various other parts of the city in partnership with some private partners to the Hilltop. And the, the investment that we're making in the Hilltop and using Homes on the Hill as the administrator of the program matches the investment that this council has done in the Wilson Road Project, the improvements we're making in NCR areas, improvements that we're making at the Recreation Center at Westgate, as well as investments in the Camp Chase Bike Path. All collectively are investments that the council wants to bring forward to, to help the Hilltop, partnership with the economic development progress that a lot of folks are out there advocating. I know Ms. Reinhart's in the, in the audience that has been a champion for the progress. And so, this is, this legislation helps move the ball forward and provides needed housing repairs. And I'm going to leave the details to Mr. Torcell and Ms. Parise to describe how you're, you know, for folks that are listening that are interested in receiving the money. But it could be up to $20,000 for home repair, which is a significant amount of money that builds on strong and safe neighborhoods, which has always been a focus of this council, and appreciates what we can do to strengthen the neighborhood and the bounded areas that we're talking about to continue the momentum. So, Mr. Torcell.
Chairman Klein, thank you very much for the opportunity. President Ginther, City Attorney Pfeiffer, Auditor Dory, and other members of the City Councils, my pleasure to be before you this evening and talk about this very important program. As the councilmen indicated, we've had many conversations about this particular program, and it is an offshoot of some community meetings we've held over the summer, frankly, beginning last spring, to try to identify different procedures and steps that we can take to improve the neighborhood. There are several different things that our community has come up with, but one of the most important things is something for existing homeowners to be able to improve their properties. And that's what this grant is. It's the opportunity for folks who are existing homeowners, the area is primarily bordered by Hig Avenue, the railroad tracks to the north. The property is south of Sullivan Avenue for the southern border. That means if you're on Sullivan Avenue on the southern boundary, you're included. And I think it goes west to, if I read the area correctly, pretty much to Fairmont or Lechner Avenue. That's a large area with a lot of opportunity in it, so we're very excited about the opportunity to do this. Our offices are located at 3659 Saldano Boulevard. That's where people will go to make application for this. Our phone number is 614-275-4663, and our website is www.hoth.cdc.org. We will be the organization that coordinates the actual applications for this, so people will be contacting our office. We'll be working very closely with the city, with their Department of Development and their staff, who will do the specs for the repair and do the inspections on the property, and see that compliance is taken care of. So, most appreciative, Councilman Klein, for your work on this. I know we've had a lot of conversations about it, but I know I speak for the neighborhood in saying this is a very important program for us, part of many other integral programs that we're trying to put together for the neighborhood. And I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak in favor of it and the partnership that you have with our neighborhood. So, thanks very much. And if Rita wants to add something.
Of course, Ms. Parise, and thank you for the accolades, but really, this is a council initiative, and speaking with my colleagues, this is something that all of us are bringing forward to make the investment in the Hilltop. Ms. Parise.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, we ask your support this evening to launch this program in partnership with Homes on the Hill CDC. We are very excited to get this program started in one of our neighborhoods that has been very impacted from the foreclosure crisis and vacant and abandoned property in this neighborhood. And what we want to do is encourage our existing homeowners to seek out the assistance they need so they can remain in their homes. This particular program will address the neighborhood, as Steve said. North side of it is the Conrail railroad track, south is Sullivan, including the southside parcels. East is Fairmont to Lechner, and then from north of the Broad Street, West Broad Street, would be Wheatland up to the railroad tracks, and the west side is Hig. So, folks living in this neighborhood can begin to outreach to Homes on the Hill or to the city of Columbus. We have an intake line, same line that Councilmember Craig shared earlier this evening, 645-8526. This is a voicemail line. It is, takes a variety of requests from homeowners for a variety of our programs. So, please be specific as to which program you are requesting. Please be patient enough to leave a message, because there are many hours of the day that we get more calls than we have people that can answer them, so we try to take them in turn. And specify what program you're seeking, and then give us a daytime number. If you give us your home phone number and you're calling from work, we are going to keep calling your home, and you are not going to make contact with us. So, please do that outreach, and we will do everything we can to assist you. This is a really exciting partnership for us. Our homeowner services office is located at 750 Piedmont, and obviously, we are serving folks in the Hilltop. We are going to be able to use office space in the Homes on the Hill offices to work directly with clients, so they don't have to worry about transportation all the way from the Hilltop, all the way up to our offices. So, we're very grateful for the partnership. We think this is going to be a very successful program. We're very anxious to get started. We look for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Parise. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. And this is a great collaboration between the city and with Homes on the Hill. And would you just share with the listening and viewing audience if there are any parameters in terms of who can apply for these dollars?
Councilmember Tyson, the boundaries are north on the Conrail railroad tracks, then going down Wheatland Avenue. Okay. Are you looking for income limits?
I'm sorry, maybe I'm asking the wrong question. I was asking about if, in terms of any salary requirements that anyone, any individuals have to be about, you know, is it, you know, 80% of something? Is that, are there any, any salary requirements that will either allow them to be in or not allow them to be in part of the program?
Very good question. After much discussion with Councilman Klein's office, we determined that we would not place any income requirements on this particular program, because there is such a need in the Hilltop. These are councilmanic bond funds. They are not federal funds, so we are not bound by those salary restrictions. And it really made more sense to really deal with an impacted area in our Hilltop area rather than spend time worrying about income limits.
Thank you. And that's, and that's a very important component, because it isn't a federal program, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're having investment in our, in this particular program on the west side, and that individuals who are, certainly are in need of those repairs will have an opportunity to apply. And so, that's the, I think, the beauty of this program, and thank you, and I'm sure you'll get plenty of applicant, plenty of individuals applying for these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify one thing. People need to be homeowners who are occupying their property as part of this. If you own the property and you're not living in it, I don't believe you're going to qualify for it. But we have plenty of people. I think our homeownership rates in most of those streets are 40 to 50%. I know there's a great need. I've also put a plug in for an event that's happening this weekend, in addition to the Bean Dinner. Rebuilding Together Central Ohio is having a national event in our neighborhood this weekend, and their national organization, it's going to be rehabbing 15 properties in the same general area, plus doing outreach to probably another 20 or so. So, I'm sure you'll hear something about it, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that to your attention, because it's another component of what we're trying to do in the neighborhood to bring rehab and improve existing properties. So, I thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for my colleagues? We do have two speakers, and if it's okay with the council president, they're both speaking in favor, and some other folks have, have stopped me to say that they don't want to speak, but they want to support this, because it's so important to the community. But Jeffrey Phillips and Stanley Thornburg are here, if they would like to come forward, and if there's some folks that want to support this and also would like to come forward, but because the council rules limit it to just Mr. Phillips and Mr. Thornburg. I don't see Mr. Phillips. He was actually the first speaker. Oh, there's Mr. Phillips. I didn't recognize you. Please, you were the first speaker.
You're the first. I guess you're first, which means I'm going to add to what you're saying. Is that the clock?
And I'm sure you're familiar with the council rules. You have three minutes. You can identify yourself and your address.
My name is Jeffrey Phillips. I'm president of the Highland West Neighbors Association, which is, most of which is actually the area you are talking about with this Hilltop ordinance. My address is 45 South Eureka Avenue. This part of the Hilltop has always been a very special place, and many of us chose to move there, because it's been racially diverse, basically, from its very beginning. We have a resident African-American population that's been there as long as white We have a resident African-American population that's been there as long as white sellers were there. That's special. We've added a whole bunch of new people since then. Looking at the last census, we have 44% homeownership. And of our household total, 60% of those are mom and dad families. That's among the highest in the city and very well worth preserving. And when we have programs like this, which encourage homeownership and assist homeownership, that's fantastic, but that's not exactly what we're talking about here tonight. We're talking about keeping people in their homes. We really need to retain those numbers. And those are excellent numbers. 60% families, my God, you know? That includes rentals and homeowners. And plus, the 44% homeownership alone is doubling in a lot of other neighborhoods. Economically, there's always been some issues, because we haven't been as diverse economically as we want to be. And this will help many people that are both of lesser means, as well as those who do have the means, that just may not have the money. I think we assume people are wealthy when they make a certain amount of money, but that's not necessarily true. It all depends on other obligations they have as well that they have to honor. So, that's the whole thing. It fits perfectly with the Highland West concept, which was basically after President Johnson's Great Society. You have many different groups of people, economically diverse, racially diverse, ethnically diverse, all living together in one neighborhood. No one has to move out. We incorporate new people as we go along, and we build a community together, and this type of assistance is very much welcome. Because like I said, the most special residents of all are the generations who have been there, and we have many families that have been there for five, six generations, and we do want to, we do want to keep them there. So, on behalf of the Neighbors Association, I only have words of praise, and I really say thank you. Thank you, and I urge all members to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, and I'm sorry I didn't recognize you. Mr. Thornburg.
Good evening, everyone. I'm obviously in support of this ordinance, but I did have some concerns that I wanted to address quickly tonight. And this is on the fly, because obviously, this has been all on the social media posts today, so I'm kind of taking some questions that I've gathered from that. Number one is, the Hilltop boundary is larger than the target area, so there were some concerns about people that may not be a part of that. And number two, we need strong outreach on this, because historically, getting this out to the community has been a big fail. So, any type of project like this has been a big fail. And the other question was, how do we get the homeowners to actually seek this out? I know there's a number to call and things like that, but how do we get these homeowners to seek out? And then, if I understand this right, someone has to write a grant, so if that's the case, how do we get, you know, the better educated writers versus perhaps the ones that have never written a grant in their life to participate or know what to say to ask for this, for this money? And then, would there be a grant assistant writing if this is an official grant or just a call in? And then, what are the administrative costs tied into this? And then, like I said before, the target areas are only all on the Hilltop. What we read in the proposal, it seems to leave some areas out. And then, the disadvantages of third-party administrators, if there going to be that. And then, the definition of exterior repairs, what is that? And then, that ties into property and code violations, the ones that are currently outstanding on property owners who do not make those repairs, because they don't have the money. Is there, would there be some sort of program that tie that in, so that money could be funded to those property code violators, so that they can get these issues resolved? So, that's pretty much my questions on that. I just wanted to make that a matter of public record, so that that's expressed. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. To answer at least one of the several questions that you had. The reason why we chose a limited versus an expansive area was the effectiveness of how the dollars could be spent. And that if we opened it up, obviously, as you know, the Hilltop is a very large geographic area. And while a half a million dollars is significant, it's a lot less significant when you spread it over an entirely geographically sparse area like the Hilltop. So, by looking at this area and in conversations with the Department of Development on where the money could be used the most effectively, where homeownership was apparent, as Mr. Phillips spoke to, and where the money can be used, for lack of a better description, get the biggest bang for our buck and make a difference in a neighborhood, that's why we chose this area. As for the administration, besides the third-party minister that you referenced, it is Homes on the Hill. And Mr. Torcel, I've talked with him before, and Ms. Parise are charged with making people know that this program exists, because the money is there. And there are so many terrific programs that the City of Columbus offers that, frankly, people don't know about. And, you know, knowledge is a powerful thing. So, Mr. Torcel knows that he is charged with making sure the folks in the affected area have the ability to apply for this money, work with them to ensure that the grants can be delivered in an effective manner, and people could take advantage of the money that's there. If you have any other questions, that perhaps, I know you had several, if it's okay with you, I'd maybe ask Ms. Parise to work with you and answer them all.
Yeah, that would be great. And I will acknowledge that Homes on the Hill, I'm very happy that they are the administrators of that. It's just that we always have a big fail on our side of town, as far as this information getting out, and it's very important. And then, tying back into the, to the Hilltop, you know, the Hilltop by definition is a big area, but yet, this program is called Hilltop. And so, that's kind of, you know, misleading to a degree. So, that's my point on that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, everyone, for coming down, and I encourage all my colleagues to support this. I know they will, because it was the collective effort to get it done to begin with. So, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I know we're approaching the zoning, and by approaching, we're 11 minutes over. I have one more piece in development. If you'd like me to read it, it'll be very quick. There are no speakers. 1349, 2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Columbus Equipment Company for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 years on real property improvements and acquisition, in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately $3.4 million. Are there any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Second. For call. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Yes, legislation passes. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to recess, regular meeting number 34.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We will reconvene for zoning in five minutes.
Regular meeting number 35 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the zoning committee tonight, we have two items. The first one is 1348, 2013, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035, R3 Residential District, 33112.11, drive-in stacking area, 3312.21A, landscaping and screening, 3321.05B2, vision clearance, and 3356.11A2, C4 District setback lines of the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 1422 East Livingston Avenue, to permit an accessory parking lot with reduced interior landscaping in the R3 Residential District and reduced development standards for a public library in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is the Columbus Metropolitan Library. Proposed use is a public library and parking lot. It received the Livingston Avenue Area Commission Recommendation for Approval, and also the City Department Recommendation for Approval. And I have no speaker slips. I would like to first amend to emergency.
For call. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
For call.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And last is 1375, 2013, to rezone 5167 Warner Road, being 3.91 plus or minus acres located on the south side of Warner Road, 273 plus or minus feet west of North Hamilton Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Don W. Kelly and Associates Incorporated. The proposed use is commercial development. It received Development Commission Recommendation for Approval, and also the City Department Recommendation for Approval. And I have no speaker slips. I would like to first amend to emergency with a voice vote.
For call. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I would like to move for passage with a voice vote.
For call.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. There's nothing else to come before zoning this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 35. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand and adjournment. Entertain a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number 34. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We are reconvened. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. Just one piece of legislation, 1212, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into various contracts for the provision of passport, home care, and assisted living services for older adults in central Ohio, to authorize the expenditure of $45 million from the Recreation and Parks Grand Fund, and to declare an emergency. Mr. Al Miller, who's the deputy director, give us some insight on this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, council members. This is to prove us, to give us the ability to enter into the second year of a two-year term of contracts. There's more than 390 Passport and Assisted Living agencies that provide services to older adults in accordance to the Ohio Department of Aging. And Passport is a Medicaid-funded program that provides home care services as an alternative to nursing home admission for currently 4,500 individuals. Emergency action is requested, so that we can enter into these contracts and continue the work they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Al Miller. Passport, as we discussed last week, provides just outstanding services and much-needed services to keep adults, senior adults that are Medicaid-eligible in their homes, instead of the expensive cost of care that sometimes nursing homes can have, and as well as the ability to not be in a nursing home and actually be within the confines of a home, your home, that you feel safe and you want to live in. So, any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
For call.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that's all I have in Recreation and Parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, in Public Safety and Judiciary, have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance 1319-2013, to accept a proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City of Columbus and FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., April 2, 2013 through April 1, 2016, to provide for wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining units, as provided in the attachment heretofore, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
For call. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have 1353-2013, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order with Lusk Mechanical Contractors, Inc., for the renovation of the probation office of the Municipal Court Building, located at 375 South High Street, per the terms and conditions of the State of Ohio Requirements Contract, to authorize expenditure of $91,069.54 from the Franklin County Municipal Court Probation Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have ordinance 1537-2013, to amend ordinance 1331-2013, passed June 10, 2013, to correct a technical error in Section 8, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
For call. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther, in Public Service and Transportation. This evening, we have ordinance number 1274, 2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Decker Construction Company, for construction services in connection with the UIRF East-North Broadway and High Street Left Turn Lane Project, and to provide for the payment of construction administration and inspection services in connection with the project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $308,959.73 from the street and highway bonds fund. This evening, we have six speakers. Our first speaker is Jules Angel. If you could please come to the podium. If you could please state your name and address.
My name is Jules Angel. I'm 97 West Como Avenue.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I urge the council to support this resolution, as the CAC has now done again. On West Como specifically, I believe the left turn lane will reduce cut-through traffic. West Como aside, though, cut-through traffic has a great impact on all sides of this intersection. I have been asked if people who live in a neighborhood can also be called a "cut-through driver" in that same neighborhood. I consider that if anyone has to change the way they would drive home due to the lack of left turn lane, then I would call that "cut-through traffic." Local or not, drivers wanting to go south from East-North Broadway have to cut through a multitude of side streets and alleys. They go north on Calumet, west on Oakland Park. They go south on Calumet with a choice of Clinton Heights, East Longview, East Como, East Lakeview, East Pasemont, or East California to take them back to High Street. If drivers miss the Calumet turn, they might chance a dangerous illegal turn at North High Street, or go through some combination of Hennepin, Milton, Delhi, Brighton, Longview, West Como, or various unnamed alleys. And that is my greater point. The litany of street names shows just how many side streets are impacted by the lack of a left turn lane at the Broadway intersection. These small residential streets and alleys are not built for modern traffic numbers or as thoroughfares, but to access houses. Others, often, they are just one lane wide with parking on one or both sides of the streets. Milton includes a section of a busy bike route, and the alleys can be even more restrictive and difficult to navigate safely. The larger road at East-North Broadway has off-street parking and was built as a main road and thoroughfare. I also believe that having a left turn lane will finally encourage the development of the Clintonville Electric Site, a positive economic impact for the whole neighborhood. In sum, I respectfully ask the city to pass the left turn resolution. A left turn option would reduce cut-through traffic and keep that traffic on the main road where it belongs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Todd Corbin. Could you please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Todd Corbin. I live at 256 East-North Broadway. I'm here to speak in support of the turn lane. I live on East-North Broadway with my wife and my four-year-old son, my six-year-old daughter. We've lived there a couple of years now. I'm a real estate professional, and I'm familiar with a variety of aspects of the business, and have done development work, and am comfortable with reading engineering drawings and things, and evaluated the proposal, and have communicated about it with many of my neighbors. And each of these neighbors have expressed to me that they are comfortable with the proposal, and the perception in the media that we all are opposed to the turn lane really has not been borne out in my conversations with my neighbors, which I wanted to convey to you today, because I think the perception has been that there is a unified resistance on the street. on the street to the turn lane proposal, and in fact, it's not the case. Had a conversation with a neighbor today about Clintonville and about why we're here, and she reminded me that, you know, we all work together, and we all take care of each other, and we're unhappy and we're almost embarrassed by the manner in which this situation has been handled. It didn't reflect the way we conduct ourselves, and I wanted to convey to you that, you know, we are sorry for the manner in which it's been conducted, and that, you know, hopefully in the future, we can work together in a more open and collegial and comfortable manner to affect improvements in our neighborhood. It's important to us to work with you in that manner. It's been expressed by every one of my neighbors, in fact. We all, you know, wish that we, this has been handled better from our end. So, thank you very much for your support of the funding of the turn lane, and we hope to be able to move forward and that the turn lane will, you know, improve the traffic flow on the street and that, you know, safety will be maintained by, you know, this minimally invasive and, you know, improvement that will give us a great benefit, and we thank you for your help in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Our next speaker is Sarah Snyder. If you could please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Snyder, and I reside at ninety-seven Brighton Road. Council President Ginther, members of council, thank you for hearing this tonight. Tonight, I'm here to ask that you vote to fund this long-awaited project in our community. By now, it's become clear to the Clintonville community that doing nothing is absolutely not an option. There are several reasons to support this project. First, side streets surrounding the intersection, such as Brighton, Clinton Heights, Como, Dunedin, and Longview, will see significantly reduced cut-through traffic. The intersection improvements were designed in response to reports of cut-through traffic on these streets and on others. Most of these streets are not suited for handling heavy volumes of traffic, nor the size of vehicles that we frequently see. For decades, families, business owners, and commissioners have recognized the failure of the design of this intersection. More than thirty-five years ago, the owner of ninety-seven Brighton came to the newly-established Clintonville Area Commission and asked them to help him solve these very problems. The evidence of cut-through traffic is easily observed on a daily basis. Even a short while will validate the negative impact on the current left-turn prohibition at High and North Broadway, as observed most recently by Channel Six News just this past Monday. Another reason for supporting the project is the installation of a left turn lane will decrease unsafe erratic movements in and around the intersection. Most everyone who uses the intersection on a frequent basis has seen cars make the prohibited left turn lane, or left turn. Cars slow in the intersection trying to make the turn, cars behind them honk, cars cut through parking lots, like the ones on the properties on the corners, Starbucks and Kroger's, trying to find a way south on High. The city's field observations in December two thousand eight demonstrate this. In a single hour during afternoon rush, three cars made illegal turns, three cars cut through parking lots on the building on the southeast corner, and two cut through Starbucks. Further, while we have seen wonderful boons to our neighborhoods, such as growing farmer's market, new boutique shops, restaurants, and retail, we have watched the southwest corner of this intersection struggle, falling further and further into disuse, vacancy, and abandonment. The Clintonville community has spent considerable time and effort working out a solution that supports the betterment of the residents and businesses in the Clintonville community, providing needed improvements to address the challenges at the intersection, while at the same time making clear that Clintonville values the preservation and protection of North Broadway. So, I ask you tonight to support this project to help our community remain vital and desirable for young families to continue and to invest in and improve the intersection where it's so badly needed at the core of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Our next speaker is Michael Rannie. Rannie? If you could please state your name and address and what organization you may represent, if any, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Committee Chair Paley, President Ginther, and members of the City Council. My name is Michael Rannie, and I have lived at one ninety-six West North Broadway for seventeen years. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to continue to table the resolution, twelve seventy-four dash twenty thirteen, and not spend the three hundred and nine thousand for construction services yet. I think that you need to complete a mobility study to really determine what is in the best interest of the Clintonville community. This was called for in the Clintonville Plan and has never been implemented, and recently the Clintonville Area Commission passed unanimously a resolution asking for the mobility study. With all the angst and drama about the left turn lane on East North Broadway, the fact that funds will also be spent to add a fifth lane at the intersection of West North Broadway and High Street for a right turn through a school zone and to move the Kroger bus stop has gotten no attention. No one has ever studied West North Broadway. Our neighborhood is middle-class, very diverse, with a mix of homeowners and renters, many families with young children. On West North Broadway, consideration must be given to the fact that we have a section of the Olentangie Bike Path that runs on city streets crossing West North Broadway at Milton, where I live. We have significant speed issues primarily because of the slingshot ramp off of three fifteen that dumps cars going fifty-five miles an hour onto our residential street. Traffic on Milton provides the definition of cut-through. People jump off High Street and zip down Milton to save time, even though there is a turn lane on High Street for them to go west on North Broadway. Turn lanes don't necessarily make a difference. It's a long light, and people are impatient, and that's why people cut through. A mobility study would look at what's best for the entire community, define traffic flow problems, and how best to resolve them. It would consider the complexities of commercial, residential, auto, school, hospital, bike, and pedestrian interests and safety. Maybe the only fifth lane that should be put on West North Broadway is a bike lane, but we don't know that. No one really knows whether the West North Broadway turn lane will be helpful to solve this problem. I ask you to take a big-picture view of this, including considering West North Broadway, which has largely been ignored through this whole process. Table this resolution until you have good data on which to make a decision. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Kuhl. If you could please state your name, your address, if you represent an organization, then you have three minutes.
My name is Nancy Kuhl. I live at two eighty-six West Brighton Road. I'm also the District Commissioner for Clintonville Area District Two. Thank you for hearing me tonight. There are lots of opinions about this issue, and there have been for years. People are entitled to their own opinion, but they are not entitled to their own facts. We're going to come with some of these facts we've discussed with some of you before. Fact number one, this has been studied to death. There has never been a complete mobility study for Clintonville. There have been some myopic studies looking at that intersection itself, not everything else that happens because of that intersection. People refer to the BAR study as a complete study, the BAR report, and if you look at the BAR report, it does not recommend a left turn lane to address cut-through traffic. If you would want to read the whole report, you can see this, but some of the main points from the report, it covers only the left turn lane and concluded that it's unwarranted. It examines Hennepin and Brighton cut-through and determines only five cars per hour, does not study dedicated right lane on West North Broadway, does not study emergent traffic to Riverside, to and from Riverside, doesn't look at Clinton Heights Elementary School, doesn't look at traffic in and out of Kroger parking lot, does not study vehicle traffic in and out of Starbucks as it wasn't there when the study was done, does not look at the impact of bicycle traffic on High Street and Milton due to the fact that they were not there in two thousand and one. It does not study traffic in and out of the churches in the area, both of which have child daycare. On page eleven of that study, it states the average hourly volume for cut-through movement is approximately five vehicles per hour. Page fifteen states the analysis indicated that an exclusive left turn lane is not warranted for the east leg traffic movement from westbound North Broadway to southbound North Broadway. ODOT and LD Manual Section four oh one point seven one indicates a dedicated left turn lane is warranted when the left turn movement is approximately twenty percent or more traffic volume. It's a fairly sound presumption to conclude that the potential left turn volume may be as high as thirty vehicles or five point two three percent. This would be a twenty-five percent, this would only be twenty percent of the traffic volume necessary to dedicate a left turn lane. So, based on that, this doesn't fit. As far as the cut-through traffic, there's a lot of traffic on the street. I live on Brighton Road at the dead end, and there's a lot of traffic on that street. Lot of people drive on the streets, but there is no definition of cut-through traffic. We don't know who's driving those cars and where they're going. Is there a problem that needs to be addressed? Yes. Is the left turn lane widening of the road and an additional lane on West North Broadway the answer? We don't know. It's never been fully looked at, and to go ahead and approve three hundred and some thousand dollars to put in a plan that may or may not address a problem that has not been identified, I don't think is a responsible way to answer the community's questions on what are we going to do about traffic. So, I ask that the council table this, and that they initiate a mobility study for the complete neighborhood of Clintonville, not just one traffic intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Bolzano.
My name is Kim Bolzano. I live at seventy-one West North Broadway at the corner of Hennepin. I've been there for thirty-two years and in Clintonville for fifty-three years, and I'm sure every one of the council members have driven by my house at one time. I've seen everybody. Our house has been in the Bolzano family since nineteen forty-two, so I do have a deep sense of family as it relates to the community in Clintonville. And if you'd noticed, going down the street, a major portion of the houses on West North Broadway have a structure on the front called a porch. You see many people, you don't see many people using them because of the traffic, noise, and dust. I've got vehicles going by my house at forty to sixty miles an hour, thirty feet from my front door, which isn't real safe. I've had car parts all over. The question I would like addressed is why widening to five lanes, removing a bus stop from a commercial corner to an area in front of privately-owned residence, is taking place without even a simple traffic study? I personally wouldn't invest money in a project which I was sure, wasn't sure if was positive outcome or a change, and that seems reasonable to me to have a positive outcome. Even Patty Austin, when asked about West North Broadway at the March Special Clintonville Area Commission Meeting, said, "We don't know. We've never looked at West North Broadway, and it's in the minutes," she said it. The people that primarily use the bus stop have a need for the transportation for various reasons. Some are older, some don't have cars, some have a disability. They go to the corner from Kroger's and catch the bus, and how will they be able to get across the middle of the street in five lanes with the traffic? What we do need on West North Broadway is slower, controlled traffic, calming devices, and a lot of speed enforcement. I believe this is in the best interest for all, even the people that use it as a daily freeway from three fifteen to seventy-one. West North Broadway has long been looked at as a rental commercial area. We are tired of being considered the ugly buck-tooth stepchildren of Clintonville and want to be recognized that we are there. I would like to see West North Broadway go from West North Broadway Freeway to what it was intended to be, West North Broadway Homeway. This is where we live. We just don't drive by, and we'd like to see this tabled and studied. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the speakers. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a series of questions, and if it's okay with you to direct them, I'm guessing Director Kelsey, Chair Paley. Okay. Director Kelsey, first, before I ask questions, because you may answer them, I mean, I guess do you have anything to say to what the speakers were saying?
President Ginther, Chair Paley, members of the council. I'd first ask Patty Austin to come to the podium and speak to the issue of further study.
Chair Ginther, members of the City Council, thank you. The Clintonville neighborhood presented to the Department of Public Service the issue of cut-through traffic on Calumet Street and other surrounding streets as a neighborhood-initiated URF project through the Department of Development. In two thousand and one, BAR Engineering completed a study which looked at various solutions to this concern and determined the best solution was to allow turns for west traffic, westbound traffic at the East North Broadway High Street intersection. This study was supplemented by an internal analysis by our traffic engineering staff in two thousand and eight that confirmed the only safe way to provide for that movement was the addition of a left turn lane. The traffic engineers in the Department of Public Service who studied this issue have a collective sixty-five years of experience. It's our opinion that no further study is necessary. In conclusion, this is not a project initiated by Director Kelsey or the Department of Public Service. This is a traffic engineer's proposal as the most safe and cost-effective solution to this neighborhood initiated request of cut-through traffic. I would also like to specifically address a couple of things that came up during the public comment. One was a statement attributed to me about West North Broadway. That was taken, that statement was made in the context of, it was asked if we could specifically study West North Broadway at some point to see if it could be narrowed. That would be a huge effort that would involve a, it would involve a study of the interchange with three fifteen and that, and those components. I did say that that was a possibility, we could study it in the future. I however, and I however, though, never intended that remark to mean that West North Broadway was not studied as a part of this analysis. It was. The other statement that I want to specifically talk about is the widening to five lanes. There is no widening on West North Broadway. All we are doing is restriping to allow a dedicated right turn lane. So, I can answer any questions.
Is it okay to proceed, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So, actually, you did answer one of my questions, and so, West North Broadway heading eastbound, there is no widening?
Right.
Okay, because that seemed to be something that some of the speaker, just restriping, no widening.
Right.
So, the only widening being proposed in this is on westbound East North Broadway?
Yes.
And approximately how many feet or yards is the proposed widening?
I, I don't know the exact footage. It's from East North Broadway to Broadway Place, which is the first street to the, to the east. It's about a hundred, a little bit more than that, feet long, and it's, it's at its widest point, it's ten foot wide.
And you touched upon this in your discussion about clarifying your remarks for West North Broadway eastbound, and feel free to kick this to the director if you don't know, but are there any talks or discussions about traffic calming? Because that seems to be recurring theme with some of the speakers as well. And frankly, I am probably as guilty as some people that get off on three fifteen and, you know, don't maybe go the speed limit that you should. So, it does concern me, and I think the points raised are valid about traffic coming off three fifteen specifically. So, do you or the director have any response to that?
President Ginther, Chair Paley, Councilmember Klein, and other members of the council. Yes, we can and will take a look at that. It's a matter of time and money. They keep referring to the opponents of some mobility plan, and if I could read an excerpt from the letter sent to City Council by Chair Dan Miller of the CAC, Clintonville Area Commission, I think it captures the issue perfectly. In sum, the CAC's position regarding the project is set forth in Resolution twenty thirteen dash oh one, passed March twenty-one, and the recent resolution recommending a mobility plan did not modify the CAC's support for the project, the left turn lane and left turn signal. Majority of the CAC voted Majority of the CAC voted to support the project because after extensive input from the community, contemplation, and debate, they decided that the project is desired by the community. The project will benefit the community as a whole, and the benefits of completing the project far outweigh any expressed concerns regarding the project. Now, we've been asked by the Clintonville Area Commission to do a mobility study. Those studies are long and expensive, and communities have to get in the queue for them to be completed. I asked my staff, how many do we have currently requested? We have one from the Near East Side, the Near South Side, the OSU area, minus the Wyland Park area, and then we have Clintonville. We will not be able to get to this complete mobility study as requested for such a large area for at least five or six years.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Director Kelsey. One question that the opponents posed to me, and I found it an intriguing question, having been familiar with the area, is why the east and west North Broadway traffic and High Street intersection cannot be more like the 161 High Street intersection?
Councilmember Klein, thank you for asking that question. Intersections are rated, as far as how they perform, on a scale from A to F, just like a grade. A, of course, being fleet, free flow through, like a highway, to F being you're sitting in congestion, going nowhere. The City of Columbus standard, which we have set forth both in our Traffic Standard Code and all of our studies, is that we want our intersections to maintain a safe level, which is a level of service D. That does provide for some congestions, but we're an urban area, but it does allow for the free flow of traffic. When we studied this in 2008 with our internal staff, this intersection currently operates just at a level of service E. It's just between a D and E, but it's into level of service E, which is below our standard. The addition of the left turn without a turn lane would push that further, that level of service down farther, and the addition of left turn lane brings it back up to a level of service D, which is an acceptable level. And to put that in terms of, just for people to understand, that means right now, the average person, if they get to the intersection and they're the first person to stop, they wait an average a little more than 55 seconds right now. If you added the turn with no left turn lanes, that would go to almost 70 seconds. And with the, with the addition of the left turn lane and the striping alignment on the other side of West North Broadway, that goes down to 43 seconds. I know these don't sound like huge numbers, but when you're sitting in traffic and it's time after time after time that you go through the cycles, it adds up and it causes congestion. When you cause congestion, it causes impatience, and it causes erratic driver behavior, which is what causes accidents.
So the reason is because of the degradation of what the intersection would be ranked?
Yes. It would be the degradation of the intersection which would create an unsafe condition.
Okay. And Chair, I'm sorry, I only have one final question, and actually, just because I chair development, I'd like to ask Director Shoney something, if that's okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Chair. Director Shoney, I know you're new on, new on the scene, but I have significant experience with development. Have you or any of your staff talked to developers or potential developers of the southwest side of the North Broadway High Street corridor? Have any of them ever talked about the fact that there is, is not a turn lane and what the turn lane would do to the potential development of that intersection?
Sure. We're talking about the old Clintonville electric site, essentially, and access to that site is a problem. We've been told that by developers who've looked at redeveloping that site, that it is of concern, and for that site to be developed, access from the east is something that needs to be addressed.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Chair Paley. I have several questions as well, so if Patty, if you're the person I'll direct them to, I'll get started. The first question that I have is, I've heard a lot of conversation about cut-through traffic and traffic calming. Is there a clear distinction between cut-through traffic and traffic calming? They sound as if they're two different issues, but then they sound like the same.
Well, cut-through traffic is traffic that will, goes through a neighborhood to reach a destination outside the neighborhood, and is, its trip is not necessarily within the neighborhood, or its trip is within the neighborhood, but it, it has to take your circuitous route around more, pass more households in order to, in order to get there. So that's the definition of cut-through traffic. Traffic calming is a technique that is used to combat cut-through traffic, where you would add features like speed humps or things like that in order to either discourage traffic from going through or alternatively slow it down.
And so, my next question related to that, when it was a neighborhood-initiated request, was it based for traffic calming or to address cut-through traffic?
It was a request for traffic calming because of the amount of cut-through traffic, and it was specifically on Calumet or a few of the other streets. The issue with Calumet is it is a neighborhood collector street, so it's used a lot by people like safety forces, fire trucks, things like that, and as a policy, we do not put speed humps on collector streets unless there is absolutely no alternative, just because of the inconvenience to the people that do need to get down the street more quickly, like safety forces.
Otherwise, that's a comparable solution to addressing one of the others. Would you say the, the speed bumps are not, are comparable solution?
Right. The speed bumps are a solution, however, in this case, you would have to put speed bumps on several streets throughout the neighborhood, pretty much that entire neighborhood to the south.
To eliminate the cut-through traffic and while calming the, the traffic. My other question was, is, I hear observations and some alluding to an estimate of the extensiveness of this cut-through traffic. Has there been a study to look at the cut-through traffic to determine that it is as horrific as it sounds? I'm trying to understand the estimate of the cut-through traffic and how drastic it is.
I do not have data with me on the amount of cut-through traffic. I do know, there's a couple places in the BAR Engineering Report where they do, where they do mention that. We have said from the, from the start that this is a neighborhood quality-of-life issue. The neighborhood out there experiences the traffic, and we have not counted it, and we have not done a study specifically to count cut-through traffic. That is a very difficult thing to do.
And so, in terms of going back to the, the study issue of whether there is one, currently, as I heard from Director Kelsey, is both a timing issue and a cost issue. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be in addition to the cost of the solution?
Yes.
And I have one last question. How, how aggressive would you say the left-hand turn lane would be in terms of addressing the cut-through traffic? Would the residency immediate solution with the left-hand turn lane, or is it sort of phasing if there's growth or more traffic based on development at any of those corners or further growth on High Street?
The, the, the results would be immediate, although there would probably be a little bit of a delay as residents who regularly drive the area realize it's an available option to them, so that, that may take a little bit of time, but it'll be an almost immediate solution.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I move for passage. First, I request to amend to emergency by voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
I move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Craig. Klein.
Yes.
Miller. Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson. President Ginther.
Next legislation I have is Ordnance Number 1285-2013, to authorize the Public Service Director to enter into agreement with TNM Associates and the Environmental System Research Institute, Inc., for development and implementation of a data interface system to replace combat, to waive competitive bidding for the license for ARC GIS Geo Event Processor with ESRI, and to authorize the expenditure from the Street and Highway Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Next, I have Ordnance 1396-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Street and Highway Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with APBN, Inc., and to provide for the payment of construction administration and inspection services in connection with the bridge rehabilitation, East North Broadway, URR WI-71, bridge rehabilitation, Cook Road, under Conrail West of Stream Project, and to authorize the transfer of $1,316,915.60 within the Street and Highway Geo Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Next, I have Ordnance 1396-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Street and Highway Bonds Fund, to allow the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the ODOT Interstate 7071 East Interchange Phase II C project, to authorize the expenditure of $1,119,984 from the Street and Highway Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
That's all we have in Public Service. May I move to Utilities? I would like to move from the floor on Ordnance 1370-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the construction contract with Lithgow Restoration Technologies, LLC, for the 910 Dublin Road Pedestrian Bridge Project for the Division of Water, and to authorize an expenditure up to $41,513 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bond Fund, and to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. Are there any comments or questions regarding this ordinance?
Waiving of competitive bidding.
I just, I do, just the waiving of competitive bidding.
Deputy Director O'Grady. Starting waiving competitive bidding.
Council President Ginther, Council Chair Paley, Councilmember Tyson. We, this contract originally started out as a maintenance contract late in the fall of last year. We requested three informal bids, and Lithgow was the low bidder on that. We thought it was only going to be about a $12,000 project. When they began to look at the structure, they realized that there was more work that needed to be done, so we needed to get more, another price and scope of that work.
Just answering your question. Are there any other questions or comments? Can I move for passage?
Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That's all we have in Utilities this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, we have three non-agenda speakers. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Call the roll.
Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily.